I think I changed them. I might have changed it because I had, this is unmodified personally. I took changes that they wanted to put in there even, but it's still not finished. I don't want to, I really don't want to. I want it to be next month or next year. So we have a couple of weeks that I'm giving you. I'm sending you everything I have because we're gonna need, you know, something that will land the actual documentation.
Yeah, and on the treasure, so we can help them out.
What do we get? We might put in here, two months is nothing else.
You, you have, you have some meetings.
I, I would receive the meeting.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any.
As far as getting that.
You want to give that to me to make sure we put that on there?
Well, she just said it back to me and then we're talking, so we can use it. I'll check. We can create a letter now, but I just got that this morning. You know how Jim's relentless?
Yeah.
He's, uh, he's chased me down so many times with that letter, that's why I was like. Okay, so we have, next item on the agenda, nine forty-five, Morgan County EMS Board Articles of Incorporation Bylaws, Discussion Possible Action. So this is one of my boards, and I start going. And Kevin, you can attest, we, we have a hard time finding volunteers, and not only find, find volunteers, but finding people that are going to be able to attend meetings. So we made some changes to those bylaws. The most important thing is the board shall consist of no less than five and no more than fifteen members appointed by the county commission. The composition of the board shall be as follows. One member shall be a county commissioner. And then we kind of marked out some things. All members of this board shall be, shall be a bona fide resident of Morgan County. Members shall be subject to a background check to be reviewed by the sheriff of Morgan County. In the event of an unfavorable background check or by the recommendation of the sheriff, members shall be removed from the board. We, it used to say, two members shall be citizens of Morgan County and have a personal residential street address containing the two five four two two, two five four three four zip code. Four members shall be citizens of Morgan County and have a personal residential street address containing the two five four one one or two five four two seven. So we got, we struck those because we, we need volunteers. So at this point, I, I don't care where you live in Morgan County, as long as you live in Morgan County, but we need volunteers. We changed it, uh, there was a spelling error. It's a fiscal year, it's a fiscal year. I don't know how that made it through all these years, all these bylaws, but that's something.
It's a very common, it's a common.
Yeah. And then everything else, just minor, minor little formatting changes. So the county commission has to approve this. The EMS board probably started working on this last year at this time. We haven't had enough meetings to get it to this point, so we finally have. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Morgan County Emergents, Emergency Benefit Services Board Incorporated, updated Articles of Incorporation Bylaws.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amendments to the bylaws.
A motion on to, on the floor to approve the Articles of Incorporation and Bylaws for Morgan County EMS Board Incorporated as amended and presented. Is there any further question or discussion?
I'm very sympathetic to this issue. I've actually been processing, ironically, doing the same thing at the Bath Development Authority because of the, we don't want to have the members, but when you have to get that forum, it becomes like, and I see that most of the town committees operate with three people, so, except for our, except for our. It has been really causing us issues of getting things done, so I'm with you all the way, so.
All right, any other comments? If you're not, all those bitters, you can probably say aye.
Aye. And you can make it as many people as you want to, and what a participant there is, you can ask me. That's what I, I like the flexibility in there. You know, in terms of how many people is on the board, because that's good, because they can be on the board, but it doesn't keep you from not doing business. They don't come, so, and their influence, of course, but there's.
And they have been reviewed by Morgan, so should be good to go. Great. Get down here to the right spot. All right, this is our nine fifty-five, but. I'm sure we have to be about fifty-five, you think?
No, this is just, this is just the, um, request, I need your request to advertise and do the RFP for this.
Yeah, so our nine fifty-five, we're gonna go ahead and knock it out. It's our Get Ready Broadband Implementation RFP. So this process started sometime for the last eight months, ten months, probably. It was a pretty, I spearheaded it, and it was a pretty discouraging process of the, the Get Ready program is a, is a large pot of money that the state set aside for implementation for broadband. And it's typically, um, it's targeting fiber mill now, so we've all openly set up meetings and wished it, would it allow us to invest some money into wireless internet service providers, but this, this particular grant through the state of West Virginia is through fiber. So originally, uh, we, along with all the other counties in the eastern panhandle, enrolled in the Get Ready Technical Assistance portion of it, which was the disappointing process to me because it took us so long to get that technical assistance just to get to this point where we can put out the RFP, but we're here, thank goodness. So the RFP is for, to solicit partners that want to partner with Morgan County in the implementation portion of the fiber, help us select the target areas, we have the target addresses, and then obviously we're, uh, the, it would make our grant application look better. Uh, the county has earmarked five hundred thousand dollars as our contribution to this, so we would like our private relationship or private contractor to also be willing to kick, you know, have some skin in the game as well. So that is essentially what this allows us to do, and this will be posted today.
It's gonna, it's gonna go around in the paper next Wednesday. It's gonna run the twelfth and the nineteenth.
Okay, will we have it on our website?
We will have it on our website.
At the same, so starting next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, yes.
Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, release of this RFP for the Get Ready Broadband Implementation. The proposals will be open on December seventh, twenty twenty-two, and the bids are due back.
I'll make a motion to advertise RFP, get that, get the Get Ready Broadband.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and, uh, to approve the broadband, or the Get Ready Broadband Implementation RFP. Any additional comment?
Question?
Yes, and I will add that the RFP goes out in the paper Wednesday, will be on our website next Wednesday, and the bids are due back on November twenty-eighth. And prepares, this will be open on December seventh. Is there any further question or discussion? If you're not, all those bitters, you can probably say aye. Aye.
Does, does the RFP, I remember when, earlier discussions, when they were talking about pinpointing the avenues where broadband needed to be deployed, this RFP includes this geographic specificity.
It will have the targeted maps.
Yeah, so we, so yeah, so part of our technical assistance portion later in the game with the contractor that the state has partnered with went into, okay, well, we know where the RDO funding went. So we know that, you know, Comcast, Frontier, yeah, so it has the target areas. We, it'll have on, on our maps where there already is fiber, maybe where we can expand that fiber, stretch it a little further. Um, and it'll have the areas that will make the grant application more attractive, meaning that there's more need in these specific areas. So, but it's really, as long as we're not encroaching on some of the areas that have already received funding, it's gonna be up to our partner, whoever that is, as well as the commission to hopefully, you know, kind of designate those areas. And then in addition, you know, one of the things that, speaking for myself, um, that I would like to see is some additional, redundancies are, you know, for the nine one one center, for the courthouse, or maybe the, some of the Parksham Rec locations. So it would be some, you know, company seven, uh, the fire station, so would be what we can pick up as far as giving them a redundancy. And then we can get creative with the terms of the contract. It could be, uh, it's some sort of revenue share. I think we, all three in a public meeting said, we don't want to own this infrastructure, or I don't think government has any business moving anything that is sold to the public, so I don't, nor do we want to be responsible to maintain it.
So, so it was, as my understanding, it was the state's priority that this funding goes specifically to people who do not currently have access to broadband as it's defined.
It's underserved, yeah, underserved, so anybody's not getting really out.
It's not, so it's not easy because like, we're gonna give you better broadband, we're gonna do better internet, it's, we're gonna get it to people who don't.
Correct, yeah. So, I mean, there's multiple subdivisions in the county where Comcast might run right by it and have thirty homes down in there, but it doesn't go down into subdivision, so looking at target areas like that, I think will be important in some of the underserved areas. Now, obviously, it's a private contractor, so they want to get the most bang for their buck, so. But, uh, you know, I've been in talks with one, I know there's at least one other one that I anticipate is gonna respond to the RFP, so I'll be excited to see that.
That works. Another issue is, does this, would it allow for multiple providers to be working together? To let out like Comcast, that they actually need and Morgan Wireless to, you know.
Well, I think that they will have to work together in some regards because they'll need to have the supply of, of fiber, so then we.
There will be a higher level person that's gonna maybe sell contract, that's what I.
Yeah, it'll be up to our, now, this, this RFP, you know, we're gonna be selecting one contractor, so whoever they work with is, is gonna be all them, yeah.
Yeah, true. Just a note on that, uh, this is fiber infrastructure. Any of the existing fiber providers in the county will bring service to any house in the county currently.
As long as you want it back.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah.
I've had that option for how many years?
Again, again, anybody who wants internet, that needs it for their job, their kids, et cetera, it is to their benefit to contribute to the cost of doing so. And again, this precludes any wireless internet service provider who brings broadband internet service from that funding.
And we're, and we were very, uh, very vocal in that, well, even at, whatever our, our speaker in the house was here, I was vocal on that because it's disappointing that they wouldn't allow us to.
Some of that is federal, too.
Can I, can I just also add, it's not that, say, a wireless internet service provider cannot provide broadband internet because they can't. So the federal government has decided for the funding that they have minimum requirements of a provider to provide. I think it's a hundred down and a hundred up, which is excessive and unreasonable, so, in my opinion.
We agree. All right, so. Let's see. Not, not quite, we have five, no, actually, no, that clock.
I have one minute.
Yeah, one minute. Yeah, it is, yeah. Yep, ten o'clock, so our ten o'clock agenda item is opening the RFPs for the Emergency nine one one paging system. How about it, sir?
I'm kind of a substitute filling in, but this process started back in July. Uh, we went out for RFP once. Uh, we only had one vendor make the required pre-bid meeting. During their review of the RFP, they actually asked for extensions for a couple of different things, uh, which led us, since we only had one, to, uh, we were also contacted by another vendor who had wrote a date down wrong or whatever. So that actually, we extended the date for everybody, uh, then another vendor, both, both provided, I'm assuming, I can't tell who the ones from, made the required pre-bid meeting, so that brings us to where we're at. Uh, we'll open these and then they'll go for review to come back. The estimated date on the RFP to come back to you guys on November second, which, whenever the RFP was put out, there was a meeting scheduled that they asked of it, so it was. I guess from that point, we get to the end, so. Two additional copies. So the bidders are G, uh, G Technology, which was previously, um, Connect Communications and Motorola Solutions. And I'm trying to find the price page here. I assume that's all we need to do today.
Yes.
Attached for twenty, which was the pricing document. Uh, do you want everything red or, red or just the total?
How much is everything?
Uh, with options included, uh, four hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. And then after, on the other page here. Total from Motorola is two million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Quite the discrepancy.
Yeah, considerable.
So we have four hundred and seventeen thousand, two point one million.
Yep.
So can, for the members that are, for the public that are here, can you quickly provide an overview on what this RFP, or what the nine one one paging system does?
Uh, basically, the paging system was carry signals from our dispatch center to the tower sites throughout the system, and then back to the payers in which fire EMS responders, so it's the way they're notified that they have an incident. Um, it's a fairly aged system.
And that is essentially why it is getting, we're, we're, we're looking to upgrade our old.
Yes, uh, we just had a problem in the last six to eight months with our Pawpaw Tower, where one of the control radio boards actually went down. Uh, we thought we were gonna permanently be down. The vendor that does the maintenance on it actually was able to find a board, and I believe it was Italy. Took it a while to get here, uh, and once it got here, obviously, it wasn't programmed to work here, so it was programming issues. That was the last one. We had a, a follow-up issue in which we borrowed the backup that Hampshire County owns. Obviously, it's a temporary loan until something happens to one of theirs, uh, until we could get everything done with that one from Italy, because it's gonna take a while. That's since been installed, and Hampshire has their back, um, but they're just, the replacement parts just aren't out there for the current system.
Okay.
And without it, what's happening now doesn't happen. So.
If they have any questions? So I'm assuming, uh, committee will get together and score some.
And come back and make a recommendation November second.
All right, wait, have any questions?
Is, uh, have, we heard about like the payers paying.
It, well, it's, it's not the payers themselves, it's what carries the signal from the dispatch console to them. All the microwaves, the radios at the towers, that's.
And other modern forms of communication have replaced payers yet?
No, and probably won't for the foreseeable future.
Is there, what, what is it the payers do that cell phones and some portable radios and all the other equipment don't do?
Function in Morgan County. I mean, that's the short end. There's so much airborne data that does not have cell service.
But payers look everywhere regardless?
For the most part. There's a couple very minor, but not near where cell phone coverage is. You know, about a sixty, sixty-five percent cell phone coverage in the county. Uh, radio coverage, probably over ninety percent. Yeah, between ninety, ninety-five percent coverage.
Yeah, but payers have a hundred percent coverage.
Ninety, ninety-five percent versus a.
Everybody doesn't have radios. Radios are all, get, get them equipped. And we'd like the officers to have radios.
Yeah, so it's how everybody's notified.
Everybody else uses.
I mean, I know they did back in the day.
Yeah, they still do.
I just thought that.
It was from this day to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they just haven't, there's no technology that replaces them yet.
No, and then you, you still run into the whole thing of, oh, the department's gonna be able to pay for everybody's cell phones if that's the request. Because at that point, either the departments or the communications, or somebody has to pay for the cell phone to get the signal.
But you could, that's almost sixty or sixty-five percent coverage.
Right. Yeah, so, we do use that technology. It's a, it's a, it's an auxiliary. So, and the system, actually, we have like, the nine one one center has the ability, if somebody comes to the station, doesn't have a key to the station. We have a, a set of tones that we can set off that will release the power at all the stations in the county. I mean, it could be used for a lot more than this, though. Yeah, it's through that system, yes. I don't know if you guys have any questions, though.
We didn't, sir, you were thorough.
What?
Yes.
You can give me a call and we'll review this and see what difference.
Sure, I think there was in the schedule, there was a time for the vendors to present. Is that correct? Maybe I'm wrong about that.
The only thing I have is present to the commission and omen, the second.
Okay.
And that was just when the committee, once they reviewed.
You're all welcome to reach out any.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna have questions because there's quite the difference, so there has to be a reason, so. Okay, well, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, so, ten of five, wireless internet service provider loan fund from Morgan County Economic Development Authority, discussion possible action. Commissioner Clark, if you have the floor.
All right, let me try that. I know I've mentioned this in the past, but this is what I'm hearing today virtually is, thinking a little longer, I wanted to get all the documentation, it's still not correct yet, so just leave it at that. But I'd like for, as a commission, to agree to set aside some funding into the Morgan County EPA's account and agree to move forward with this. I have some, two documents that are draft form. One's just a resolution that we're, that I'd like us to consider next meeting for approval. Basically, what this does is creates a revolving loan fund for the economic development authority. And it does a, a, a really great thing, in my opinion, in that we mentioned earlier that there are other funds for WISPs available at the moment through Get Ready or any of these programs. And if you look around, I mean, the county, the, the only one that, only kind of companies that are actually expanding, expanding internet broadband in our county, with all these corporations here and all of them getting grants, is, is our own Morgan Wireless Company. I mean, they're the only one doing it. And so, now, there might be other WISPs out there, this would be available for them as well, but we'd like to set aside a hundred and thirty thousand to the, and I, and I met with the EPA, they're willing to manage that account, and they will give a small proportion of that as, as for part of the work to that, and I gotta work out all that detail. Like, that's what I'm here to do, is to ask if the commission will be willing to put aside a hundred and, what else? Hundred and thirty thousand, and that would be enough to do ten loans, roughly, or thirteen thousand each, probably, roughly, in that area. And would set up enough community towers that would, you know, for each community tower that can hit twenty customers, that's twenty more people that has internet. And that, and literally, in this topography, that seems like the way to get there. And as time, the way I see this, being a, a revolving fund, that over time, as this money gets put back in the pot, we can lower the amount that we need to hit a lot now and, and slowly develop it all over the, all over the county. And so people in these little halls might have a shot at it, you know, plus with their, I, I noticed that recently, you know, Ron actually posted where one of the, a customer literally paid for his own tower, it was worth it to them to do that. Not everybody can do that, but the idea that a, a small tower could be twenty, thirty, forty houses at some locations, that's a big deal. So, and we, this will actually, this will actually get us there while we watch all the other federal millions get spent. That's my take. And motion, I'll, do I need to make that motion, or do you? I wonder how you see it.
Bill mentioned twenty. It's in actuality fifty people, okay? Because each home in Morgan County has approximately two and a half people per household.
Sure.
So, uh, you know, it, it may seem like a minimal impact, but if you multiply that over time, it can become substantial. I would also say that your fiber optic providers are not going to go to a homeowners association, a development for twenty homes. Typically, they will not do that unless the people pay for that, uh, expansion.
Or you can get a grant for it.
Or you get, yeah. And, and just to add to the grants, our personal feeling at Morgan Wireless is, on grants, is it's not free money.
No, there's no such thing as free money, you know that.
There is an additional cost to all those grants, that being employee costs for somebody to do the reports and, and do all that. If you say an employee's thirty-five salary, you're talking fifty thousand dollars. Plus then, the company is, uh, their flexibility is limited by those grants, so they can't re, react as fast. The biggest problem a WISP has is time and money, uh, obviously. And we all know that the county is short of this, uh, infrastructure. And there's not that many people really that, that are gonna respond, uh, to any of these. As we know, has been the past history. We're, we're encouraged, and we thank the county commission for at least considering possibly doing this. Our tower cost on our internet towers is approximately eight to fifteen thousand, so you rate. So you're right in the middle of the, uh, cost. And, and that cost is dependent on height and, uh, whether it's a guide tower or self-support tower. Now, those, those costs, that's simply the tower cost to get it up in the ground and erected. Has nothing to do with, uh, any of the other costs that we may have as far as equipment on the towers, uh, et cetera. So, again, we appreciate the county considering that's, we think it's a positive. We'd be more than happy to, uh, work on expansion within the county as much as we possibly could, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you and your team for all the things you're doing here to get wireless or to get internet.
It's a good, it's a good product to, I mean, that on top of, it's not, it's not, it may not be a hundred to hundred every day, but I'm sure a hundred up, hundred down, but I, I know I've talked to enough people that have it and it's good.
Thank you.
Um, I, I just think that, I don't know if you want me or you, or how you want to do this. Uh, do you make it, so? Trying to make a motion to put a hundred and thirty thousand of what was previously ARP money into account for this use and maybe technically, you know, the way that's termed.
Uh, the ARPA, I mean, still in the ARPA account, we just have to move it from ARPA to general account.
Yeah, from there too. And you'll work out the details over the next two weeks if there's a permit here to do that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to set aside a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from ARPA funds, which will be moved from general county into an account that will be created for the Morgan County Economic Development Authority. Is there any further question or discussion? Are you none of those favors in the comments saying aye? Aye. Mission carries. So we're not, we're not proofing this agreement.
Yeah, I think we're going to move them. We would do, we'll, we'll play it, you know, it's going to happen.
Would the, would the loans, I mean, you'll talk about that when we come back.
I just didn't want to put all the effort into it before we got there.
Yeah.
That's the certified.
Would, would, would the loans go to like these subdivision communities?
They would actually go to provide. I guess that's not even been thought about as whether or not a subdivision group would want to do that. Don't think they would.
That isn't, I mean, that's an interesting idea, though.
I know, I, I, it's honestly not thought of the process, but they are not, you know, the income reliever.
Yeah, but see, yeah, I mean, if a homeowners association.
They were just taking the money and then pay.
I mean.
Yeah. Well, maybe if a subdivision has five homes and it doesn't meet the criteria for Ron to be willing to spend the money to put it in, but they say, well, if we can buy those, we can pay the payment over seven years. We just can't come up with today.
Yeah, I don't know. I want to keep, I tell you what, after dealing with the, the county EPA, I'm going to keep it simple as possible. They were not, I want to still remain interested.
I get it.
But, but I disagree, I mean, it's.
No, listen, no, I was going, well, just.
I don't know, Bill was going to.
Never even heard of it. That was maybe a prior or.
Every other document has provider on it that I've found, but that's what I'm. Yeah, so I'm never.
Probably lost anything else.
So you envision that as the.
I, I do envision as a provider getting away and putting that in.
What's that guy? I mean, I would say, that's an interesting, I mean, it's interesting, it's an interesting concept because HOAs, they generate revenue by their, via their dues that are, could be used infrastructure, roads, whatever. So I mean.
It is an interesting thought.
It is, I mean, that's.
I think we'll get modifications.
Yeah, yeah, so I, yeah, no, it's, yeah.
Uh, as, as we're talking here, say, with what you're, you're saying generally on the outside of the county, I think Morgan Wireless would be happy and has in the past entertained individuals and HOAs or developments in, in infrastructure improvements. So we'd be happy if any, uh, area in the county would, would, uh, consider their own funding, whether it's an HOA, a development, a developer, or an individual, we'd be happy to work with them separately. But there are costs that would have to be shared. We have a, uh, a, a certain model that, uh, may determine whether we would put up our tariff ourselves individually. And the number would be thirty, say, twenty-five, thirty typically, in order for us to make it a financial benefit.
There's some large subdivisions where, oh, multiple properties in there are vacation rentals. And I, I don't have any trouble believing that if, if River Ridge doesn't already have three, that they would. Yeah, I thought they would.
No, I agree, I think it's an interesting concept, I like that, that little idea. Hope you aren't a jerkies. All right. Ten fifteen, Pawpaw Memorial Park Project, Great Opportunity Discussion, Possible Action. This is also you, Mr. Clark.
Yes, I'm just the community development guy and I've always been one, so.
Thank you, Ron, see you.
Even projects are all that, so, um, I'm, I'm not going to honestly tell you, I don't have a lot more to think about, so you all are good.
But I haven't got a chance to read your latest emails.
Yeah, I don't have a lot more, so I'm pretty good. This, this is, uh, an opportunity that's come up from, uh, the folks in our region now and, uh, working with, uh, Ron at the Pawpaw. And basically, uh, the, the, it's a park project, uh, that they might be able to get some substantial funding for. Uh, the, the, where the, where the, uh, the track is and several others are looking at the potential of having, uh, being able to access up to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, potential, uh, through to West Virginia. I, I don't know the exact program, but, well, yeah, but in that, uh, he is, and I thought I had something to add. He has sent us a letter of request. One thing I failed to bring in here today, but I can find it really, uh, in, in that he asked that we support, ask for support of up to, I think it's fifty, fifty thousand dollars. And I assume that would be a more or less a hotel, hotel request to have a match. They were matching their, assuming a twenty percent match, that would be a ten percent match of their expenses. Now, they also have some, unfortunately, though, they will have some engineering that they need to do upfront here. I mean, about eight thousand, I think it is, and they're asking for, for, because of the floodplain issues there. Which is totally okay. None of anything that they're proposing that I can see has any substantial walls or think of that mostly appears, but it does need to have, it will need to have the documentation for our plan, which is, and unfortunately, we don't have those local folks that do that stuff anymore. So we're asked, so basically, I'm making, bringing, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing their, carrying their water, uh, and asking them, ask fifty-five thousand. Yeah, asking for the support of this project, of support fifty-five thousand, even if we have to do it over a two-year period.
So they're going with option two? Is that what they're going with? Which option, I mean, I see three options here. And I don't even know what Trackmaster is. Trackmaster is a cheap option, asphalt's number two, concrete is number three, most, most expensive.
I assume that they're going to make their project proposal based on what we give them, what we agree to give them. I'm pretty sure that's, uh, they'll take.
So, so what you're requesting is the county commission, uh, it's a twenty percent total, but we're going to match ten percent.
Yeah, and, and that would also, so it'll be additional for the, uh, for the, uh, this request. Fifty-five thousand plus half of the eighty-seven hundred for engineering, so forty-three. So it's actually fifty-five, thirty, thirty-one hundred. And you see a letter. I'm going to write that off.
Forty-three ninety-one fifty plus fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Did you send it?
I sent it to you.
You did?
Yeah, afforded it to you.
Yesterday, oh, yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, so, that says in particular, letter from the town.
Oh, I see.
Step up for them as well, I gotta give to them if they're willing to do that.
I was looking for an actual letter, it's in the body.
Fifty-nine, three ninety-one fifty is the total.
And again, if they ever get the grant, then it's not a thing, but.
Uh, so what was that, fifty?
With the bringing a half million dollars to the Pawpaw, I think that'd be a very good, uh, for, for all of us. Uh, that is a community that is definitely in a.
So it's going to be paid for in the hotel.
That would be our hope.
Okay, this time I'm undertaking a motion to, um, approve a match of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents to be paid, uh, to the town Pawpaw, uh, contingent upon them receiving the grant.
And I'll make that motion as well.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the match of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents to be paid for out of hotel hotel tax contingent upon the town Pawpaw receiving the grant for this project. Uh, and it's also worth a new, be kicking in ten percent as well. Any further questions, discussion? Okay, none of those favors in the comments saying aye? Aye. Mission carries. All right.
If, if you have a tally sheet you keep or someone keeps one of that, we'll make sure that we put that over there that's, so when we make, or logistics.
We will pay that until we know for sure they got the grant.
Right.
Kate, have you seen this yet?
I, I've heard a little bit about it, no, but no, could I see, could I see that?
There's a little while, they, uh, actually.
You got that, yeah, if you have that in a, is that a region nine document?
Yes, it is, region nine, we're worried of.
All right, is that something that you could share via email?
Yeah, let me look through this, I think so.
It, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be nice. I mean, I think.
Ron had talked, talked to me a little bit about, kind of just in.
When you're, yeah.
And I think it's, uh, Kate, this might be something good for you to put in the paper, if you think it's good to put in the paper. But, you know, I, Morgan County obviously just isn't Berkeley Springs, right? We have South Morgan, we have Berkeley Springs, we have Pawpaw, we have Gracie-Capin. And I, I, I'm proud of what this commission has done to incorporate these other communities. The community in particular that I would like to find a project in is Gracie-Capin. Um, and as we know.
Those are my people, so I'm back there.
Yes, and I, I lived, I lived in between Pawpaw and Gracie-Capin, right past Beatford Road for ten years of my life. So I'm one of those people as well. The only thing I had to do when I was a kid was ride my three-wheeler on the railroad tracks. And three-wheeler dangerous as it is, you have to cross the tracks on a three-wheeler, it's, but anyway, I digress. Um, I, I, I think it's, as with any of these projects, it takes someone to spearhead them. You know, we, we don't necessarily always know what communities need unless they tell us what they need. Um, you know, Pawpaw has been very active in, in, you know, the past couple of years and making sure they're engaging the commission to say, hey, we got this idea, we got this idea. Um, the visitor center, whatever the case is. So if, if, if that person is in Gracie-Capin and has these ideas to bring to the commission, we would be more than willing to entertain, you know, looking for a project that we can do in, in the town of Gracie-Capin. We just need, I, I always use the example, you know, we have Mark Coyle from the mountain bike course. We have Ron Davis and the town council and Pawpaw and, and Maverick, AB?
AB.
Maverick AB, um, Town Bath, the Parks and Rec. It is, we have these people that are bringing up these projects, but we just haven't had that for Gracie-Capin yet. So I would love somebody from Gracie-Capin to step up and say, hey, we, we have this project, we think it's a good idea, whether it's for youth or whatever the case is, in Gracie-Capin.
I like to add to that a little bit, just by, at, at engaging region nine in their effort too, because I like, I like approved funds when I know we're going to triple them.
Yeah, we get a.
Why, that's what I like. I like projects that are matched from some other area that, it makes things like you're, when you're, now, that doesn't mean that there isn't going to be a good project somewhere that doesn't, that, that don't get, they get the wrong light, but boy, it sure helps when you, you know, that there's.
Yeah, I like when our buddy has legs and it can run.
And we have never been in, we haven't been in this position.
Right. So I think, I think it would be, and we can make that connection. Somebody from Gracie-Capin has a project that they think is great for the town of Gracie-Capin, we can make those connections to, to region nine and to Macy or, you know, to, for anybody to help, you know, you know, lay out the roadmap to, to bring a project from, you know, thought to provision and construction or whatever. So I just want to throw that out there. I feel like it's worthwhile. I've heard people in Gracie-Capin say, well, we don't have, tell us what you need. We want, we want to do these projects all over Morgan County, not just in Berkeley Springs or in Pawpaw, we want it to be everywhere, so. All right, moving on, administrative report.
I'm coming to you to request some funding to try to get our parcel layer that's on our GIS website corrected. I'm sure everyone's aware that the digital lines that relate to our aerial photography do not, do not match up correctly with the appropriate parcels that, as they should. Um, so I have contacted our, the company that does our website, which is Apple Geographic, and asked them to get me a quote on what it would take for them to re-digitalize all of the parcels in Morgan County, which there's approximately fifteen thousand, two hundred parcels, um, currently. And what they came back with is it's going to be four dollars per parcel. Um, digitally, well, you have to take the deeds and you have to do the meets and bounds and you have to do every line in accordance with that. So that's, it's expensive, which puts the cost at approximately sixty thousand, eight hundred dollars. I spoke with the assessor, um, she is willing to pay half of the cost to have this done. Um, so we.
So I guess it's a pain point for them too.
Absolutely.
So it does make the job.
And the planning department and just everyone, it just, it just causes a lot, a lot of problems.
Oh, scares the crap out of property owners.
Yes.
I didn't realize it was off and I pulled it up, oh my gosh.
Yes.
Half of my, half this building's on the neighbor's property and luckily I called in and they were like, it's okay.
Yeah, and there's a thing disclaimer on the website that says this is just for representation purposes, um, so on and so forth.
Seers that are never bought, apparently, never bought the building.
Right, so we want to fix it, we know it needs fixed, the assessor's willing to go in for a half of the total cost. This is just a, a rough quote, um, I'd have to come back and definitely get, you know.
So our cost would be roughly thirty thousand, four hundred.
Yes.
So are you wanting us to approve up to thirty thousand, four hundred? Or are you wanting us to say, hey, we feel like it's a worthy project, get the final quote, bring it to us?
Um, the quote that I got was for July, so it is October.
Yeah, so why don't we, uh, do you think you can do that between now and next meeting?
Absolutely.
So why don't, why don't we, you know, why don't we go ahead and put it on the agenda for the next meeting, uh, for approval? And maybe if we could get a letter from Debbie to say, hey, and, sorry, and then write it and say, hey, we're, you know, the assessor's office is going to pay half of it. Here's their cost, here's our cost, that would be good.
I don't foresee how many issues it's involved for.
No, I don't either.
That, that is a, a big, I mean, I'm a little bit of a GIS stuff.
Yeah, it's just, it's going to be a very detailed process.
What do you think of how many people that rely on that? I have a, I have an app on my phone called hunting pro. And it relies on that data. So a lot of hunters use that data to figure out, hey, I can put my tree stand here or I can, you know, and it's just not, it's not, I mean, it's.
And that, that, that parcel layer is used not only for that, but it's used for our flood tool, Western New Flood Tool is used by our GIS tax center. It's used for people doing insurance, um, floodplain, all that kind of stuff. So it's very critical that we get this fixed.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Stephanie, we appreciate it. Anything else on your list? All right, anything else with the good calls? From the people, for the people, by the people. I need to think of the tagline.
You need, you need your own theme.
Like in every, like every commission meeting, they have Mr. Rogers, it's beautiful, they have been very excited, thank you. I'll work on that. No, it's, it's chambers, no, it's.
I don't think mine.
It's just like positivity is golden light.
Yeah.
You don't know that about me by now, it is the only light.
Yes.
So. All right, well.
Some look on your face a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, we were trying to count it.
It was.
I was, I was thinking positive, but I had some baffled looks trying to figure out some of your. We got them.
Yes. What do we know about that?
Um, waiting to hear when the actual writ has been filed.
Do you think they've been in a rush here?
They were, and, and I can provide an update for this, Kate, we talked about it. Um, since it didn't actually change the outcome of any elections, the attorney general's office, and I believe also the secretary of state, agrees that there was not an urgent situation to get it in front of the circuit that Friday. So we, we found it on Thursday, they didn't believe it was that big of an emergency. So Dan, uh, our prosecutor attorney, Dan James, has been in communication. So Dan, our prosecutor attorney, Dan James, has been in communication with the attorney general's office, the attorney that's gonna file the writ to the circuit um, to give them in, give them in the information. Stephanie and myself provided them with the timeline, all the details that we could. So essentially, it's in their court now. Dan forwarded that information over to the attorney general's office last week. So essentially, we're kind of in a holding power pattern, um, just waiting for them to get the writ actually filed, which I sure will know.
I thought it was gonna happen.
Done. All right, is there anything else? All right, means attorney, everybody have a great day. Let's take these checks.